We'll go ahead and call the meeting to order for the Council of Bluffs Community Schools' Regular Board Meeting, January 26th. Mr. Wilson, please do the call.
Mr. Hanson.
Present.
Ms. Riley.
Here.
Dr. Augustus.
Here.
Mr. Kozier.
Present.
Mr. LaFerla.
Present.
Mr. Arthur.
Present.
And let the record show, Mr. Bill Grove is out of town this evening.
But, our thoughts. Please join me for a moment of silence, followed by a pledge of allegiance. And we are proud of our schools introductions. Dr. Brechner, is there anybody?
Thank you. We have a couple of introductions, but we'll make those right before our reports.
Excellent. We're on then to the approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion?
We move approval of our agenda as presented.
Second.
We have approval on the second. Any discussion? Dean? Okay. Yeah, so all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Excellent, it's passed. Approval of the minutes. Is there a motion?
Approve the minutes of the regular board meeting of January 12th, 2016.
Second?
Second.
First and a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Now is opportunity for members of the public who wish to address the board regarding any of the agenda items or other matters of concern to please come up. Is there anyone? Okay, we'll go ahead. Superintendent's report, Dr. Brechner.
Thank you. First on our agenda tonight is a report about special education services. And to lead that report is Becky Zorn, who will join us as an official Council of Bluffs employee on Saturday. No, that's not right. It's on Monday, February 1st. Thanks for being here, Becky.
Thank you for having me here. My annual report. Just a few things to highlight tonight. There are like three main points I want to review with all of you as board members. And then I have two people with me that I will introduce and they will do the remainder of the board presentation tonight. So this is what we call our annual special education report. And here are the three things that we really want to... I bet I better full screen. I know. There we are. Yep, we are. Thank you. That looks a little better, doesn't it? The first piece, I know you've been talking about a little bit when Teaching and Learning did the first report on academic achievement. And that is that whole piece about working to close the achievement gap between students with disabilities and students without disabilities. The second piece we want to talk a little bit about tonight is working closely with internal and external stakeholders to ensure that we have effective and efficient delivery of service. And then the last thing would be providing individualized services and support to meet the unique needs of students. Now, I have to... We're going to start with the achievement piece, the closing the gap. One of the things we have talked a lot about is what does create a gap between the kids with disabilities and the kids without. So one of the things we're going to really focus on is what would be, here's our question, what would be an acceptable gap? And I know that sounds a little odd, like is there an acceptable gap? But if you think in Iowa about how kids are identified, we're already starting out about two grade levels below when we look at identifying a student in the area of either reading or math, and often writing. So what is an acceptable gap? And then what are some current practices we have that might be contributing to that rate of progress? Or, in other words, contributing to that rate of progress, not growing very fast. So we want to be sure that we're not looking at the wrong thing when we look at the difference between kids with disabilities and kids without. So our study will be primarily around what's an acceptable gap? And then are there things right now that are prohibiting our practice or our goal to reach that gap lessening? And we do think we have some things, and some of those we'll probably get into some of our service delivery system. In regard to collaboration, we work close with internal and external stakeholders to ensure effective and efficient delivery of service. And you'll probably start to hear a bit of a theme because everything we do do should in the end contribute to that closing of the gap. But we don't work just with internal groups. We do have to work with some external sources as well in special education. So just to give you an example of the different groups and different teams that all pull together on behalf of special education, we did just a couple of slides. There's an elementary special education leadership team. And you can see the names of the principals involved in that. We're very lucky at the elementary because we have just about half of the principals. So it makes it a pretty comprehensive group. Their role then is to make sure that their other colleagues are understanding what are the primary issues and concerns? And also the really good things going on in special education. For secondary, we're working this year with the assistant principals from the four primary secondary buildings. And the primary reason that they are a part of the team and that they're such good contributors is that they are also responsible for special education at their buildings. So they are the primary person that works with the special education teachers, the teams, the staffings, and that piece. You'll see right up there with them are the Teaching and Learning, or what we call our core special education team. And these are members of a team that now are funded through our TLC grant, which we feel very fortunate because we started originally with one program lead. And then we added the elementary program lead. And then over the last two years, because of the TLC grant, we've been able to add an elementary and a secondary curriculum specialist. So that has made a huge difference for day-to-day life of special education teachers out in the buildings. And just for the overall good for students. So a lot more support wrapped around that whole curriculum piece, the whole service delivery piece, which again ultimately gets us back to our first focus area, which was that achievement piece. Here are some more teams that are always working in regard to special education. We have an assistive technology team. We do have the special education department chairs. Remember, that would be just from our four secondary buildings, the two middle schools, the two high schools. They have a primary role at their building to help make sure that services and student needs are being met. We do have a small preschool team with our specialized program teachers and then our LRE monitor. One of the roles of that team is to work closely with the Green Hills team of those individuals serving birth to three students. So we always know when we have students coming into the district that are turning three and may or may not have a disability, but that's part of that group, to make sure that there's a smooth transition for families. And that we're aware at all times of students who will be entering our district. So that's what that preschool team is. We have what's called a significant disabilities team. That's a little bit self-explanatory, but one of their primary roles is to work with the alternate assessment, which is the assessment that students with significant disabilities take instead of Iowa assessment. They have what's called alternate assessment, but the real name is dynamic learning maps, or DLM. They try to always keep adding, but it is the alternate assessment. We also have our Council of Bluffs Behavior Team, and I know I've reported on that team before. This year, they are part of a training that's collaborating with the University of Iowa, University of Nebraska Omaha, and then the Iowa Department of Education. So it's the first time that they've offered the training out to UEN districts instead of just to AEAs. So we feel very lucky. It's a little intense, but it's very worthwhile. And we'll be able to help students who have some very significant behavior needs do some of the things that we would do if we sent them to Meyer Monroe or if we sent them to the University of Iowa. So we'll really help the district. We have our Mercy Hospital Transitions Team. I know we talked about the elementary program there and then the collaboration with the partial program. New this year is a secondary vocational team because vocational rehabilitation has passed a new federal law called the Workforce Innovations Opportunity Act. We're trying to smile about the opportunity, but we do have a good team working on that and we're starting to progress. That is effective July of this year. Service is the last piece I wanted to talk about, and that's what we do every day to ensure that students with disabilities get their individual education plan requirements met. But also that they're able to access Core whenever possible. In other words, that they're always in their least restrictive environment. So whether that be pull-out or whether that be in a gen ed class or a gen ed class with support, that's one of the things that we have to ensure for the district at all times. So an illustration of that really will be our primary presentation tonight from Lori Durand and Tracy Fresh, who are the site supervisors for extended-year special education. And I know you've seen the data on extended-year special education, but I don't think we've ever really talked to you about how does a student get to qualify for extended year? Why would they go there instead of summer exploration? Just a little bit deeper about what do we do in the summer for kids who meet criteria for extended year. So the last slide again just reiterates what we've talked about. We're working to close the achievement gap for the students with disabilities and not working with our stakeholders. And then always trying to provide the individual service that we need for our students. Thanks.
Any questions? I guess I do have a question I can ask.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Looking at what was provided in the packet, where it talks about the number of students who open and roll out.
Yes.
That are in... How does that work for, just curious on funding, like they open and roll out to a service that provides a more, you know, hands-on care or some other special need? And then we must, we bill and we pay them, how does all the funding flow through?
Do you, do you first? Oh, sorry. I always forget that. Do you want to talk about the students who are open enrolled or the students who are tuitioned out?
Well, they're listed in here as kind of a big group.
We do have some open enrolled, so let's start with open enrollment. Those are families who choose to attend a different district. Some of those students have IEPs. Some of those students become students with IEPs after they've open enrolled. That funding, the school where they open enroll, two counts their, what we call their 1-0 count, or the general ed dollars. Then we count them for special education because they will bill us for any of those extra costs. And so we count them on what we call our special ed count, the one that we do November, it's October, last Friday of October. So that we make sure that we're bringing in money for those students so that when we're billed, we have that money to pay them. The tuition out students, which would be the ones that might go to Children's Square, to Alpha, those students are all weighted also. Iowa still works off of a weighted system. We have weightings of level one, level two, and level three. And the dollar amount we get goes higher with each of those weightings. So for example, with a level one student, you get your 1-0 count, but then you would also get an additional piece of weighting, but it's about .68 of that that's added on to that. And that's how much you get for that student. Any student who is at Children's Square, maybe Alpha, because I know we have quite a few at Alpha, those students should all be weighted level three so that we would get the maximum dollar amount. If we have a student that's tuitioned out, and I think we only had one last year, which would be called a high-cost student, where if we expand a certain amount of dollars to ensure their individual program, then we have the way to apply to the state to get those additional dollars. Would be the difference between what we got for our weighting and what the cost for that student would be.
Just think, because we seem to run a significant deficit in that category each year.
Yes.
You know, and you're not funded for that. So I'm just curious on some of these ones where, does, if we, if we take in students from other districts and they become a special education student here, maybe they were there, maybe they aren't here. I mean, is there a benefit to another district to send them to us? Or is there, I mean, does the funding flow through? Or do you pay more as the receiving district? Or when they go to someplace else, are we billed more? Or is there any, you know, because with that huge deficit, is there a benefit to someone? Or, you know, I know we get, we get a lot of students, I think, who come here for the level of care we provide.
And I think I understand your question. Some of the students that we send to other placements, I would say the majority of students, that we, as a district team, send to other placements. And because we don't feel we have adequate resources and supports to be able to serve them in the district. Some of those students that are on that list are placed in those other placements because of a foster care placement. They might be a ward of estate. Those are all additional ways that we claim for money at the end of the year. So the ones we place, we have a very strict process we go through for any out-of-district placements. And we feel like that's where their needs can be met. We do meet monthly with the placements close to us, Heartland, Children's Square, Alpha, to look at, here's who our students are. Are they ready to start transitioning back to one of the programs that we have in the district? So we're actually able to keep a better handle on that than we have.
So Dean, might you help with Troy's question about do we, do we lose money? Do we gain money on kids going out, coming in?
I don't mean that to be funny. But I'm like, I'm curious, you know, if someone sends students to us because we offer a higher level of care. Do we take on that student from another city or another district? And then we take them on and then we incur a deficit because we're educating their child because they don't or can't do that, I guess.
Yeah, what happens is the, we are able to bill back to the resident district, the cost, the direct cost of educating those kids. So whatever Heartland, for instance, would charge us for a child in another district, we can bill that district back for that cost. Where the little, sometimes a little trick comes in is if a student is residentially placed in our district, we cannot charge that rent back to the host, excuse me, to the resident district. We have to eat that cost because we're the ones deciding to send that kid to a particular school rather than serving him or her in one of our existing schools. That would be the only time that we would be losing money, but...
So they send a student here, we say they should go to another program.
Correct.
And potentially we...
If the IEP, the IEP team states that. But for the most part, we are, we are getting reimbursed for the direct cost of special education for those kids.
Just to be... With, the reason we have a special education deficit is because we have more and more students with more and more serious needs. And we have to serve those needs. But if they weren't in our original budget, we can get spending authority back, but we don't get the cash back. So we get a little help, but we don't get the cash to help.
The cash would come from property taxes.
And just to be clear, staffing team would not ever recommend residential placement. And I just don't want you to be confused by that, that other statement, so.
Can you define IEP for those that don't know what that is, please?
I can. It's called an individual education program. And any student with a disability, so they would have gone through a process of trying to, first saying, boy, this child's having a little bit of difficulty. And that could be academic, that could be behavior. So you try some intervention, come back together as, it's usually a building team, and that, well, they're really not doing very much better. So there's a point where you've tried intervention for probably six to nine weeks, where you say, it's time for us to go to what we call suspected disability. In other words, we think there's enough evidence there that we think the child might have a disability. So at that point, the parent has been a part of this all along, but they're brought in and they sign to go ahead and do the assessment to see if indeed this is a student who would qualify as a child with a disability. If they qualify as a child with a disability, it's at that point that an individual plan would be written for them. And that could be, like I said, it could be academic, it could, could just be math. It could be that this child is in all general ed, but they have to have a goal for math. It could be behavior where they have two or three goals of, how do they stay safe in the building? How do they keep hands to self if they're little? But it's a, it's a pretty long process. The technical time you would have is 60 days from the time you've signed suspect to the time a child is or isn't identified. But as Dr. Brechner indicated, our numbers are up with those students. And it's about this time of year that we're starting to see, boy, we have tried so much. We really feel like we're going to have to move that process forward. And I would say our buildings are pretty conservative. Sometimes I think we wait too long before we move to that suspect. But again, then if we have more students, we would get the additional weighting that Dean talked, does that answer? I could certainly send you a little more information.
It's pretty phenomenal that you have over 1,400 students, is that right? That each have individual plans and a handful of people are watching over that. I think that's pretty phenomenal. A lot of people.
Other questions or should...
You talked a little bit about the acceptable gap, and I assume that's pretty hard to land on. But I see from the Iowa assessment scores that the gap is closing on, for math and reading, correct?
A little bit.
A little. Well, with enrollment of special education students increasing, I assume that closing that gap is a little harder to do. So we should be celebrating that a little bit?
Maybe a little bit, yeah. We don't want to get too, but thank you for saying that. I don't want to get too in there because we still need to figure out, are there other things we could do to get kids closer?
Sure.
To Core and progress a little bit.
And once those students meet the requirements of the program, they are exited.
Yes, they are exited.
We don't keep those students in, in special education if they don't need to be in that program.
Right.
So I mean, it's not like we can put them in there and just think we're going to get all this money forever. We do have a process that, that the goal is to get them out of the program if at all possible.
Yeah, at least annually, we have to review.
Right.
That and more times if a, if a family or a school believes it's time to look at that IEP. All right, I'm going to turn this over to Lori and Tracy, and I'll let them tell a little bit about who they are, what they do when they're not doing extended year.
I'm Lori Durand, and I am a school psychologist. I work for Green Hills, but I am fully devoted to and work for Council Bluffs and love it. And I've been supervising elementary, special, extended school year for the past three years.
I am Tracy Fresh. I forever have been an early childhood special ed teacher for preschool, but this year I'm a curriculum specialist for preschool, taking on a new role and some training for all of our classrooms.
We're going to talk a little bit about extended school year. First of all, we want to talk about what other criteria for qualifying for extended school year? Because not all students who are on an IEP would qualify. And there's three main areas how that works is, one is there's a goal area of concern. So that would be that the student is not making acquisition, they're not working towards meeting their goal. And that would, we sometimes think of that as a critical learning period. We think about a student, also it can look like a child who's just starting to take off in the area of reading. So they're just starting to get some of those beginning skills. And if they had the whole summer off, we'd be really concerned that they would not maintain the skills. They'd come back and we'd have to start all over again. The other is that regression-based standard. Typically, we think most kids over the summer maintain and they come back. And they may take a little bit of time to regain those skills. But what we don't want is kids who take over, we, what we use is about eight to nine weeks. If they take longer than that to come back to where they are, that's a student that would qualify for extended school year. The other one is rare and unusual circumstances. That sometimes has happened when a child has had an illness. We've had that happen sometimes if there's been a major behavior or change in their, their life situation and they've missed out on a large chunk of school. So those are the three areas that the IEP team would look at to determine every year if a child qualifies for extended school year services.
Looking at the difference between the two, our extended school year services is a three-week program. All of our students currently have IEP goals. It's a half-day program. It, we have weekly community outings to do variety of things. Breakfast and lunch are served. Class size is typically eight to 10 students with a teacher and a para. We have some specialized programs that serve six to eight students with a teacher and two para educators to meet those needs. Where our summer exploration program is a five-week program. Very few students that attend have IEP goals. Full-day program with afternoon enrichment activities. Breakfast and lunch are served. The class size is a little bit bigger, 15 to 20, with four para educators meeting the needs of all the classrooms.
Next, elementary. The last year we did it at Edison, the year before, I believe, we were at Rue for a couple of years. We have gone to a theme approach. A lot of our kids are not very excited to come to extended school year. And so we have the past few years gone to a theme approach, and that has helped a lot. So we just put our last, our themes for last year. We do a weekly theme. We try to just explode it in the whole building. We have visuals all over for the kids. We try to have somebody either come into the building that we, regarding, around our theme. Or we will go on different outings during the week to sort of get the kids involved with that. We involve the parents with that. We have a weekly incentive program, and so the incentives are tied to that theme. We have found a lot more engagement with the kids this way. Our teachers work before school starts. And we go, this year we went out to the AA, to their media center, and we just basically went through all the different materials. And so the teachers were able to plan lessons around those themes. There's just a lot of research to support that thematic approach is really going to engage our students. And these are kids that we really need to engage. Instructional strategies, we make sure that all the teachers are special ed teachers, first of all. They are trained in Guided Reading Plus, which are our reading interventions, interactive writing. We have used work systems for a lot of our students with special needs, and that's a way to organize their work, their learning, and to help them focus. So we make sure all of those are present. Our specialized programs are all represented, and I just listed those up there. We make sure that all of those kids, because when you think about the criteria, those are the kids that lots of times with those really specialized needs are going to need specialized services. And we've had a lot of luck with our specialized teachers being so dedicated that they almost always are there for extended school years, working with their students, which really helps. And then we've had great tech support. That has been tremendous, I think, the last two years because we, that first day we're there, we have somebody there from the tech department helping us to set up. We have the kids on Chromebooks. Melissa helped us with setting up Lexia. It's just, it's a team effort, I think, that makes this all work. We have our AT people helping us make sure we have communication for our nonverbal students. So that whole package just makes it work. AT. Assistive technology, I'm sorry. Assistive technology would be devices that are helping students that may be nonverbal or maybe not be able to access educational material.
At the secondary level, we continue with the themes. The, the meeting ahead of time at the, at the AEA media site was very, very beneficial to them. They go out of their way and a lot of our specialized classroom teachers teach it during the summer. They're very, very dedicated. These are the ones that were in effect last year that were very popular with the students. Instructional strategies for them, the curriculum is embedded into their instruction using the theme activities. Lots of Chrome time, lots of individualized and small group activities that are going on to meet individualized needs. Work tub systems that some of our students require are all embedded in there. Work tub systems that some of our students require are all embedded in this as well. There's a lot of theme-related mobility, both for hands-on experiences, for cooking activities, for purchasing groceries for those, and other off-site experiences that they may have. Some of our teachers choose to team together for some of those activities, but not the entire time. So they'll get together and intermix with other. It's, at the secondary level, I have middle school and high school, so sometimes we have some of those intermixed groups. It's fun for the middle school kids to get around some of the older students. Are, all of our specialized programs are in existence as well for our ESY programs.
We just, but a couple of places that we go and that we've had come in, both groups, we had the planetarium, which is a blow-up planetarium that we got from the AEA, and that was very popular. We go to the children's museum and tie that into the themes, the zoo. Hy-Vee works well with us as far as on, we do a lot of shopping there for the students, trips to the park, the Dairy Queen. We went to the SAC museum.
We did. We went to the SAC museum. We also go to the Durham Western Heritage Museum. Wild West Group did that, and then they also went to Pioneer Trails to do a bonfire and cookout. Hy-Vee's been wonderful with our groups as far as letting them explore the whole money process, giving us extra ads so that they can do their grocery list ahead of time. So they've been a wonderful partner with us.
A little bit of just how we've evolved, we feel like, as the program. At the end of every summer, we've had all staff fill out a survey so that we can continue to improve. This past year, the Mercy's Transition Program joined the elementary group for a week, and they did more of enrichment activities for a week. So that was nice. We've added the Jump Start Program, which I think we've had a lot of good feedback on that. And what that is, is typically the week before school starts, our specialized programs, so our autism, our therapeutic learning, our extended learning program, they come and they are there for two days before school starts when there's no other kids there, but teachers are there. They go through and they run through the lunch line and get a snack, so they can practice that. They meet their teachers, they meet the para educators, they meet their classroom teachers. So that has really done well, and we're hoping to, we've only done that elementary up to this point. We're hoping to add middle school next year to help those kids transitioning from fifth to sixth grade. We really individualize things to meet students' unique needs. We have a student who, because of his needs, was not able to even be a part of a small classroom. So we had one of our teachers who, after she was done teaching all morning, she then went on different outings with the student, working on some skills. So that just really shows the dedication of our staff and how they're willing to just really make, meet the needs of the students. And we also serve kids Alpha, Brook Valley, and Boystown where they don't do extended school year. So we need to take those kids back. And so those are kids we've identified as being our most challenging students. And so we've had to work with our staff to really meet their needs, and the teachers have just been incredible. And we've seen growth in that area as well. So that's exciting.
Those teachers are great about thinking out of the box to help us come up with ways that we can best meet those needs of those tougher students. Next, partnerships. Right now, we're partnering with Goodwill and Vodak as we look at transitioning students into other programs after they graduate, and they've been great assistance with that. We're looking at some more partnerships. We'd love to partner more with Omaha Children's Museum and the zoo and other possible community partnerships. We're open to other ideas as well. We're looking at maybe doing some more things with Hy-Vee, giving students a chance to look at other community roles and jobs that they could look forward to and things like that that we can help them learn about. The other thing we would like to look at is, we have some students that qualify, but they don't end up attending. And that's one area we would like to look at. We want a team of feedback from the families as to why. We always do follow-up calls, but we would just like to get a better feel about why they're not attending, and then maybe explore more ways to communicate and inform families earlier so that we have a better anticipation of who's coming. Any questions?
You compared the extended school year to the summer exploration program. Is it possible for students to be in both programs during the same summer?
They run at the same time. So typically, we have not had them in both programs. We do have some families that mistakenly register them for both programs, but because they run at the same time, it doesn't work that way. IEP team then meets and better decides which program is going to best meet the needs of the student.
What time, I guess, in the year do we start to identify, you know, if that student's going to be fit for the, you know, for the extended school year or for the longer summer exploration course, I guess?
It happens at the IEP meeting. So when that happens annually, we need to make those decisions by the end of March as far as if they're qualifying for extended school year. Typically, the students that qualify extended school year, their needs are so significant and great, it would be very difficult for them to be in the summer explorer program because of the larger class size, and those teachers are not special ed teachers for the most part. And so the level of, I think, skills that is needed to work with that student would not be. So it's an IEP team decision ultimately, and the parent is a part of that IEP team.
Like, in my mind, I would think that when we started summer exploration, the intent was to get a lot of our students who probably were on IEPs to continue their education in the summer, correct?
So that's actually not what you mentioned. So summer exploration is for those that not have IEPs.
For the most, there are some students who go through summer explorer that may be on an IEP. Typically, that would be maybe a student who is, has one goal area, so maybe reading or math, and not a really significant deficit in their skills.
More of a level one student. Could also be considered for a student that, sorry, could also be for a student that might be in that intervention stage. Summer exploration might be looked at as trying to help bridge that gap. Maybe they're not identified with a disability yet, but there's a little bit of a gap that they're trying to bridge or try some interventions and see if it will close the gap.
You had mentioned that your screening process is typically within the first eight to nine weeks of school. And with us starting later and winter break approaching within that 12-week time period, is that enough time? Should it be done sooner? Are they getting acclimated after eight weeks, and is that's why we're choosing an eight-to-nine week window? Or why eight to nine weeks?
We don't choose that. That's mandated by the state.
They won't let you assess that child until after eight weeks?
That is, there's criteria that's established by the state, and that is what we're following. So it's not that we don't assess them. We are, we go back and we look, where are they, where were they at at the end of the school year? So say, I'm going to use reading as an example, they were at a level D. If they came back to school and they were at a level A, how long did it take them to get up to that level D? Back to the D where they left off? And so if that takes longer than nine weeks, that's a definite criteria. That's where, then we say, yes, this child definitely qualifies.
And I feel like we're missing out on nine weeks.
Well, during that nine weeks, and that's where, during that nine weeks, they are getting services. And so they're working, they're not stopped working with them because they're on an IEP. So during that nine weeks, they do get instruction. So from August, well, I guess September, September until...
What about those that are on the borderline?
There's some leeway, I think, that we look at, and we look at those other two criteria. Is there something going on in the child's life? Or they have that critical learning period, which some of our elementary kids, we see that they are because they're...
Who identifies that? The classroom teacher?
The IEP team.
Which includes the classroom teachers, special education teacher, the parents, and AEA support staff that would be serving the student.
These are kind of more additional, another layer that we're putting into place, you know, with everything else we do. But that's mandated.
Every two weeks, goals are monitored by the IEP, by the special education teacher. So we then go back and look at that. That's the data we use. So they're collecting it for every student, whether they qualify or not.
We may also find, teachers will notice some regression after Christmas break, which is only a couple of weeks. So those things are noted in that progress monitoring, so we don't always have to wait that full nine weeks if we have other things that would come up.
And part of your questioning for those that are qualifying but they're not attending, do you find that transportation is an issue since it's a half-day program?
We provide transportation, so the kids are bused to and from the building. So I don't think it's that.
From their bus stop or home?
Actually, from their door. We eliminate all, like, obstacles. We call, we call them every day. We have nurses on staff that help, that make that call every single day. But I think we run into vacations. Sometimes that's a barrier we hear. Sometimes we do hear parents say, my child needs a break. We've had that a couple of times, and we try to convince them that, yes, but they'll have a break in June. Let's July have them come to school.
When is the program for three weeks? Is it in the month of July? July, okay.
We do that so that there's that regret, that period, we're not right in June, so then they have two months off. So we try to do it right in the middle.
A little bit of break in June and a little bit in August.
Five weeks.
How does it work with the students that we have tuitioned out, or they go to services elsewhere? What's that like to them to come back after a month and be in kind of an intensive thing with people they weren't familiar with for three weeks?
I think what we've heard back from some of the teachers is, most of those kids, we put into, they're in a classroom with one of our specialized program teachers who I think are excellent at building relationships. And that first week, there might be a little bit of stumble box, but we had one student that I can think of this summer who came from Alpha, and he just did incredible with Megan Howard, one of our behavior support teachers. And from, I would say, day two, she had him in her routine, and he understood it, and she just spent that extra time with him. So yes, it does take more time for those kids, but the teachers are willing to put it in.
How do you evaluate your outcomes once the program's done after three weeks? What type of testing do you utilize that's objective to measure an outcome?
All the students have IEP goals, and so we monitor their IEP goals.
That's subjective?
It's an, an IEP goal would be an assessment that's done. So it's what is being used all year to assess their progress, the same thing is used. So for example, the student may have guided reading level, or they may have math probes. That is what is used for summer school as well, extended school year as well.
How about behavioral?
We have daily behavior charts that we keep track of. So if a child's working on hands, you know, using coping strategies, there is a behavior chart that's monitored every day, and then that's averaged out by the week.
And of those students that are involved in that program and then are enrolled back in regular school year, how are they measured? How do you feel that that's benefiting them or not as far as throughout the remainder of the school year?
So once again, that IEP team will look at that regression and look to see how, did they lose skills? What we have is we share that information back with the regular special ed teacher who's working with a teacher yearly. That information is all shared back through their IEP. And so that teacher, if that child would be able to make that determination through the IEP team, if that child made progress.
So do you feel that the celebration that was mentioned of closing the gap, that this three-week program is helping do that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Do we get feedback, I guess, from the, like, the Alphas? Do they give us a certain amount of feedback so we know right where that student is? Or how does that, I mean, I guess I'm curious on how that works where you bring them in.
There's an extended school year form that's filled out for all of our students. It gives them the end of the year current functioning, what levels they're at, what guided reading level, you know, whatever that they would, their goal, yes. And then our progress monitoring goes into a progress report on that same form, and then that's sent back to the teacher. So using the same assessment tools. The progress report is also shared with the family so that they have a copy as well because those progress reports go out from the sending school. So the sending school gets it back in addition to the families. And then the sending school team takes a look at all that data and the big picture.
And some of these children are put back in a regular classroom. Is that correct?
Might be a regular classroom with some special ed support.
Yep.
Do we ever compare the regression levels of those students who attended the extended school year to those who qualified but did not attend for whatever reason to verify that the regression is less for those who attended?
I think one of the areas that we would like to look at would be, why is that happening? So that piece, I think that's a good question. It would be a good way to be able to share with parents, our data shows that when students attend, they don't regress in their skills. We haven't systematically looked at that. I think we have teachers that would share that information back. Oh, I wish they just would have extended, attended extended school year. But I think that's something we need to look at more deeply.
I guess, have we heard from parents why they wouldn't want their student to attend? I mean, because I'm assuming these are fairly high need...
Sometimes it's a hospitalization. Sometimes the student has to have some surgery, so that's when they plan it, is over the summer. Sometimes it's a family vacation. We do have students that might attend two weeks and miss one week, or maybe there's a summer camp that the child qualifies for that they'll attend. Sometimes it's just, they don't come. You know, so yeah, so sometimes we have valid reasons, which are great, experiences that they need. So I think we just would like to get more feedback from everyone.
Extremely comprehensive. You guys have a lot on your plate. Thank you for what you do.
Any other questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Lori and Tracy and Becky, thank you. Report on HumanX surveys, MC18.
Do I need to change anything over here?
Good evening. I am here with what I think is really very good news, and that is our report on HumanX results. You know that as a board of education, you, one year, several years ago, you said, what do we need to do to make this be a best place to work? And we've been working on trying to meet that goal, knowing how important it is for our staff to know that they're important to us. So let me give you a little bit of history first. This is the history of our work with HumanX, which really tells us how our staff is feeling about various aspects of their work environment. In June of 2012, we had our first feedback session for administrators only about how does it feel for you to work here? And we decided based on that that we wanted to extend it to the entire school district. So in October 2012, we started with our first full district survey, and we've repeated that every year for four years. This is our fourth year. In every single year, our results have improved. Every single year, we've had, as it says in the slide, a building feedback session where we shared the results, building by building, and the building team set goals for how they could continue to keep their high points high and how they could improve their low points. This year, for the first time, we did the building feedback sessions ourselves instead of having HumanX employees lead it. That was primarily a financial decision, but in the end, it worked out well because many of the staff members said they felt more comfortable just talking among themselves instead of with somebody from outside. So this year, it says 2015 because it's a 15-16 school year. It occurs, the assessment occurs in October with the results back in November. We had 73% of our staff participate in one of the two surveys. The full survey went out to all people working in the buildings or in the district except for facilities, custodial maintenance services, and nutrition. And the reason they had a separate survey also comes back to our strategic plan where we said we wanted to have some surveys specifically for different individuals because many of the surveys talk about how you work with your supervisor, and in the buildings, they are not necessarily the official supervisor for FMCS or for nutrition. Twenty buildings, departments were measured, and buildings led their own feedback sessions. At the feedback sessions, we were taught, in fact, somebody from HumanX came and ran through a practice with us as a district, to review the top five items for each district and to pick two items that you wanted to keep working on, to review the bottom five items for the building, and to vote on two or three that they wanted to work with, and to brainstorm what could we do in order to get better. And the final thing in each of the presentation was to look at the three-by-three index, which HumanX says kind of gives you a snapshot of how people are feeling in this building. So you have all of these results in your book. In fact, you have much more detail than I'm going to share tonight. But what's important about this category, this slide, is that in every single dimension, the arrows pointed up. In every single dimension last year, the arrows pointed up also. HumanX would tell us that that's very unusual, but we're very proud of that. The top items at the district level for this school year are listed up there, and you can see not only what the item is... And you can see not only what the item is, top item for everybody in our school district came out to be, "I feel great pride in the work I do." That's under the engage-inspired dimension. And the current mean is 4.56. Last year's mean was 4.47. So these are all really high items that went even higher this year. Our staff said they're also continually seeking to improve their overall productivity. They're fully engaged in the work they do. They're committed to success of the school district. And in the roles they play, they have the opportunity to do things that they enjoy and they do well. That's really pretty good news for a school district as large as ours, or for any business, so to, so to speak. These were our bottom items. The lowest item, which continues to be the lowest, lowest item almost every year, is sixty-one, Council Bluffs Community Schools has a genuine concern and interest about me as a person. However, HumanX would say, "This is above the norm." We moved from 3.34 last year to 3.55 this year, which is a statistically significant increase. So we are going in the right direction on every one of these. There was an increase even though these were the bottom five items. I went through, this was good for me, it's good for me to report to you, because I went through, and since HumanX didn't do it this year, I went through every one of the items and tried to find the biggest change we had. And these are the top items that had a change, any change over point two. The top one was, "I have the opportunity to communicate with my supervisor or administrator." You know, we know, we've been working on that significantly. It's important to us and we want people to know that. The second highest is, "I would recommend Council Bluffs Community Schools as, to a friend is a great place to work." That's kind of good news. And Janet will tell you that we have more and more people that say they would recommend this school district to some of their friends as a place to work. Third highest, "I'm satisfied with Council Bluffs Community Schools as a place to work." Increase of almost of, of a quarter of a point. Next, "I've encouraged someone to apply here." "I feel great pride in being part of the Council Bluffs Schools." "Council Bluffs Schools has a genuine concern and interest about me as a person." Even though that was the lowest item, it was one of the top increases in all of them. And I won't read them all to you because you have them all. But I did find all of these. And I'm, I did speak in another presentation about that last one. "We believe that a lot of things that are happening in our school district are making all of us more proud every day to be a part of Council Bluffs Schools." And the last item, "I speak of Council Bluffs Community Schools with pride." Increased substantially from last year to this year, getting over the four mark. So all of that's really good news. This is an average three-by-three. You remember, because you've studied it. On the left side is, "How satisfied am I as an employee?" And the right side is, "How engaged am I in my work?" And HumanX uses all of their questions to come up with this snapshot. And the top right corner is the number that you want to increase. HumanX tells us that the average score in the top right box is thirty-five percent. Now, they acknowledge that education is generally higher, we must be a happy bunch. But generally speaking, it's not that much higher, they say. So this is the three-by-three for our district as a whole. For this school year, it was seventy-point-four-two, which is twice as high as the average. And that's an increase from sixty-two. So we're kind of pleased. Now, we're, we're sad, in the bottom-left corner are two-point-nine percent of our people that say they're dissatisfied, disengaged and dissatisfied. So those are the people we got to make happy, or we got to find something else for them to do. But we're very pleased with that. I also broke out by different categories. So this is elementary schools. Their, their top box was sixty-eight percent. The previous, previous was sixty-two percent. Every one of them went up, by the way. For middle schools, last year they scored that top box at fifty-seven. This year it moved to seventy-two percent. That's a huge jump. And high schools last year were at sixty-four percent, and that, this year it moved to seventy-three percent. That's really good. E S C, where we work, we are at seventy-two percent. Last year we were at seventy percent, so we went up also. Then you, we also did the special surveys, M eighteen, with our two groups, custodial maintenance and nutrition. And those scores also went up, as you saw on your report. On the left is F, FMCS at seventy-four-point-seven for their composite score. And Warehouse went up from, to seventy-five-point-nine percent. Something that's really important about these two surveys is that the number of people taking the survey was almost double what it was last year. So we know we have more voices in the room and they were still more satisfied with, than they were last year. So what are the highest increase by school? I'm not going to tell you any kind of low. We had one school that had a lower score. Every other school went up. These are the highest increases. At the bottom was Canesville at ten percent. Carter Lake at almost fourteen percent, and Franklin at almost fourteen percent. By the way, Canesville increased ten percent two years in a row. And then these are our top four schools for increases. Crescent, small school, but went up about thirty percent, which is phenomenal. Tucker Center went up twenty-six percent, also a very small school. Kern, you know, has had a lot of changes this year. They are happier this year, twenty, almost twenty-one percent increase. And Hoover increased eighteen percent. So overall, it was very, very good news. And I would be happy to answer any questions from this presentation or for anything in the report that you received in your packet.
The results all shared with all district employees? And I assume that the, at each building, the employees all know where the areas of focus are going to be and?
The, at the, at the building level, they help in designing those. For instance, at E S C, we had a meeting with all of our members one morning, as many of them that could come. And we set our own five goals. And as an executive cabinet, we review those almost weekly. And we are going to review them with, with our team members throughout the year. But yes, at every building, they do, they see primarily their own results and their own goals. Related to this, because of your encouragement, we decided this year that we would take part in the Best Place to Work contest for Omaha area. First of all, we had to fight our way in because we're in Council Bluffs. And they said, "Well, that's really not Omaha." And then we convinced them that we are in the Omaha metro, so they allowed us to come in. I think we got to come in as a member of the Omaha Chamber because we're a member of the Council Bluffs Chamber, which is a member of the Omaha Chamber. So that is going on as we speak. It started in our district. We sent it out on, on January twelfth. Every employee in the district has an opportunity to answer that. It goes until this Friday, January twenty-ninth. I put out one extra call and said, "If you didn't get the survey link and you want it, let us know and we'll ask them to serve, send you another one." And about four people responded then, so we know that everybody has had an opportunity. In order to be contending for any kind of award, we don't know if we'll get an award or not, we're just trying. We're putting our money where our mouth is. You have to have fifteen percent of your employees respond to the survey. As of this week, we have sixty-eight percent of our employees that have responded. I don't know if they're saying good things or bad things, but they're certainly responding. So that, the decision on whether or not us, any business is a finalist is February twelfth. So we'll let you know either way.
I just have a comment.
Yes.
Your staff appears to be committed, engaged, driven, and proud. And I see that on a daily basis with the teachers that I interact with. But I have some concerns. A question was asked, "I have trusting relationships with my supervisor, but not my team." That was declined. "Our team effectively communicates," and that was declined. I find that the, the communication between the supervisors and based upon the results is improved. But the communication is missing between team members in the building. And I am not an expert on how to improve that, but I'm sure it's very discouraging to go to work every day and not have a coworker to lean on or talk to or have a relationship with besides your supervisor. And these teachers are in very stressful environments. Everybody that does their job is in a stressful environment. But when you need a coworker to talk to or lean on and that positive environment is not there, I find that very concerning.
Can I ask, was that in the full district survey or was that in the M eighteen?
It's in our board packet. I was just looking at the green arrows that were down and the brown arrows that were up.
Okay, I'm just going to come look real sure.
Oh, no, no, I won't show you.
I would say at least they were down in the hundreds of a percent, which makes me happy. Yeah, that's pretty good. There was a third.
Right, those are the two questions that pertain to having relationships with your team.
Okay, and remind me, what, what was the decline? Because the decline, I think, was only like point oh-three.
I have at least one close friend at work.
And what was the, it went from what to what?
Four-two-five, four-two-two.
Yeah. So absolutely recorded that we should keep working on it. In each of those, I think I recall that nothing went down more than point oh-three. But you're right, we should look at those because it's really important.
So the third one is on the next page. "Our team effectively communicates with each other." And the one above that was, "My team has open and trusting relationships."
And they did go down. I think they were all still over four, but that doesn't mean we shouldn't keep working on it.
As, I mean, the team is part of your best place-to-work environment.
Right. Absolutely.
I would say, I'm so happy where this number is, where these numbers are. Get rid of where they were.
Four years ago.
Four years ago. And I think that top box might be double what it was four years ago. I mean, it must be nice to see if maybe we could find that.
I can find it.
If we could find that box.
I just need to remember to look.
The change has been dramatic. And I think you see it in the schools. And it's been a wonderful thing to see, so.
We're not done. We're, we're working on it. We absolutely talk about it often. You guys coined the phrase for us to use, "Best place to work," and we will hear that multiple times in a week. Okay, this is a best place-to-work issue. How are we going to deal with it? Actually, that terminology has come into play as we have started working on budget. It's really hard to look at some budget problems we might have and still be best place to work. So you have, as a board, influenced our vocabulary in a very positive way, and I appreciate that.
I would say the one, "I speak of the CB Schools with pride." That was below a neutral before. And now that it's over-agree, you know.
You know, that's a really good point. I, what I should have done is gone back to the initial study and found out what were our lowest five and our top five then. I, I can do that. I would try to remember to do that.
The fourth year that you've done it?
Any other questions?
And then the M C eighteen, is that something we'll do going forward too? And then just try to?
We're, we're going to try to keep doing it, whether or not we do this all every year. I mean, we, we have set this up as one of the ways that we're going to evaluate the teacher leadership program. Because one of our goals for teacher leadership was that we would have a more collaborative culture in all of our buildings. So we need to do something like this every year. As we get to the point of looking at budget issues in the next couple of years. It's not an overwhelming expense, but it's about eleven or thirteen thousand dollars. So we really do have to think about, do we want to do this every year or maybe every other year, something like that.
The question about recognition within ten days is, do you feel like that's more of a yes or no as far as the ten-day question? Or is it, I mean, does a teacher really want to be recognized every ten days?
It's not just a teacher, it's every employee. And what HumanX says, and Gallup said it before HumanX, is that people really do want to be recognized. And I first heard Gallup talking about, if you go more than ten, ten days without having anybody recognize the work you're doing, that, that kind of, you start to lose a little oomph. But one of the really hard things we have to deal with is, it doesn't just have to be your supervisor that recognizes you. It can be your teammate. It can be a parent. It can be a board member. It can be lots of people that recognize it. And also sometimes we believe that people, we don't stop to say, when I say, "Mr. LaFurla, that was really a good report you gave last night." By the way, that's positive report within ten days? Notice, we're doing that kind of thing. Because sometimes it feels like it's just a comment and people don't recognize, "I'm doing this on purpose. I'm telling you this on purpose. It's not just a flighty thought I had. I'm really trying to give you some feedback, so." We talk about coaching a lot more than we used to. And I know that the whole teacher leadership program has put in student-centered coaching, which has changed the mindset of our teachers to the fact that we coach each other to get better. And we, this gets to your point, Dr. Ogres, about we work together as a team to keep working on it. That's, that's the only way we're ever going to be the best district we can be. We're making progress, but we're not, we can't slow down. My fear, and I'm not the first person to ever share the idea, if you're not getting better, you're getting worse. And so we have to keep plugging away at this because if we don't attend to it, it won't, it won't stay as high as it is.
Well, in terms of recognition, I think as a great place to work, it's every, to your point, you know, that of recognition, everybody that works in the district is a part of making the district a great place to work. So I think that these results are just recognition in itself that everybody's working hard at that, so.
And I think the hard thing is that it is going to be harder to keep improving it.
It is.
You know, when you start, you know, it's, it's, I think that the need for us to keep funding it because to make sure people go, "Okay, yeah, this is a lasting thing." You know, I think people started to think, see it that way. I know the second year in, they were kind of like, "Okay." And the third year in, and, I mean, have people realized that this is just going to be how it is?
I think they have. The Teaching and Learning Department has done a really good job of including this as some of the data points that buildings look at. And they take them very seriously. I mean, we are cautioned not to evaluate based on this. However, HumanX, by the way, doesn't caution us, we caution each other on that. HumanX says, "You know what? If you've got two buildings and one of them's getting better results than the other, you ought to talk about it." So we talk about it. But we don't specifically say to anybody, you know, "Your evaluation is going down." We, we talk about, "What does this, what does this mean? Why do you think this happened?", et cetera. It's, it's really good news when your scores go up. And for almost every single school this year, the scores went up. And principals take them very seriously and wait with bated breath to see what the scores are, so.
Excellent. Okay, so update on the progress related to Strategic Plan Two.
Thank you very much. You get this report every quarter. Tonight, I'm not going to tell you anything very new. But I do want to start with the fact that if we didn't give this to you every quarter, it wouldn't necessarily keep our eye on the prize as much as it needs to be. So I know that the team I work with thinks, "Oh, gosh, we've got to report again." But it keeps us reminded about what work we're supposed to do. So I need to tell you, you know, the mission of our school district, which was set originally in 2008 and reaffirmed in 2013, is that we want to guarantee every student graduates. Not just graduates, but graduates with knowledge, skills, and character to become a responsible citizen and to succeed in a world that's changing. And we're going to do that by creating a leading-edge, inclusive educational system, which provides challenging expectations, diverse experiences, engaging curriculum, and innovative teaching within a collaborative, caring community. Every one of those words is really important. I tend to shorten it to just read the first couple of lines, but every word is really important. So in this strategic plan for this year, we have set out to work on thirteen plans. That's a lot, and some of my team says that's too many. But it's actually about as many plans we have been, as we've been working on every year since 2008. So the first one has a star on it. Because we think, while we are going to continue to work on this forever, we think we have done the work we need to do for this plan. Focus teacher professional development on instructional practices in order to improve and strengthen classroom instruction, in order to improve student results. And you hear about this almost every single school board meeting. You hear about CB University. You hear about how we use Mondays. You hear about the teacher leaders that we have that are working on this constantly. So we think we have a plan in place. Doesn't mean we won't tweak it going forward, but we, we think we've done what we need to do related to this. A second, and that's the only one with a bright star. Some, a couple others were on our way, but. One point two says, "We will this year develop schedules that support the learning team cycle so teachers can have equitable, job-embedded time in all grade levels." You recall last year, we started on this work. We took it to a teacher committee. It's related somehow to negotiations because of the hour, hours of con- It's related somehow to negotiations because of the hour, hours of contract. And we did not get agreement with everybody on this. So, we're now looking at a different way to embed professional development. Janet and her team believes that we're close to moving on that, and they continue to work on it. Our next plan is to clearly communicate information to the community about the achievement of school system and its schools, including sharing student performance results. You know that we have put up a data wall, and we keep, I hear there's a new rollout coming very soon, related to that. We are going to keep doing that to keep data up in front of everybody. We are now, the committee is looking at ways that we can have similar reports to all of the buildings that are easy to find on every website, both district and building. And even today, I got an email from the committee saying, "You know what? We want to be planning our next patron tours, and maybe let's keep gearing it towards this and another, another word, strategy we're working on. Increase district-wide family engagement." We have told Mr. Hamilton in his first year, "Just go do this." He has a plan in front of him. He's already started working there. Some very good plans ahead of him, and you read about some of those in your report. District-wide program to increase area business and district connections and awareness of our strengths and positive impact. This one kind of ties with one I mentioned earlier. We're looking for ways that we can let our businesses know about the work we do, bring them into the conversation. We've started, and in many ways, we want to keep working on it. We've got some plans ahead. Develop a program that ensures positive, respectful interactions when every person communicates with a district employee. That's in red, because that's a carryover from a previous slide that shouldn't be in red. But this is something we continue to work at. Twice already this year, since January, we've put out, with our help of Diane and Josh Rogers, our new communication specialist, we've put out videos to all of our staff, short videos just talking about good things going on in the school district, and reminding them that they absolutely are the first line of communication with our community. And they need to know about those things, and they need to be sharing them as they go on. We'll continue to do that work. Establish practices and partnerships through which the school district will obtain increased, sustainable funding, above non-formular revenues every year. And in the packet, you heard, you saw some of the things we're working on. In a, in a day and age when we know that the formula revenues aren't going to be enough, we really are looking for other ways to fund it. But we're very aware of the fact that many people that want to fund things don't want to just give you money for things that you're already doing. They want to start new programs, which is wonderful, but it doesn't solve the initial funding program. So, we're going to keep working on this. Aside, related to this, we do have to find ways to work with our legislature to understand that funding for schools is essential, and telling schools to keep getting better without funding them more is magic, and we can't do magic. Develop a comprehensive approach to provide all district employees with training, support, and resources. We think we're pretty close to working on this one pretty effectively. We have expanded our CBU offerings in other ways to paraprofessionals. We're going to be meeting later this week with our first paraprofessional advisory team to talk about what kind of training they feel they need, and how we might provide that to them in the best way possible. Implement building and department-specific surveys. We kind of did that going forward last year, but we didn't finish the part that's underlined. Establish protocols for voicing staff concerns. It's in policy, but from the strategic plan, we know that we have to be able to make that very clear. So, Janet is working on that and bringing it to her lead team. And we're, once they approve, we'll be doing that training with our staff. Identify the most important indicators and metrics within academic skills, non-cognitive skills, and knowledge about post-secondary options, and assess effectiveness on an ongoing annual basis. This is part of our strategy to make college going inescapable. And I get the opportunity to share with you, as our first audience, some postcards. We'd ask you to return them to me, or return them to a school anonymously, and they talk about CB Future Ready. And we're trying to get a, an feedback from our community about, for students in the Council Bluffs Schools to be future-ready, they should demonstrate the following. We want your ideas on this. And so, we're going to get community voice into this. We have done lots of research on what this entails. We know what other states are saying, what our state is heading down the road to say. But we want input from all of our community. So, you six are the first six to give the opportunity. The next strategy that we're working on is to develop a PK-12 system of interventions, both internally and externally, for behavioral and mental health. You know very well that we started this last year. Tim is working with a team to talk about, how well are we doing with four agencies right now? And do we need more agencies? Do we need more support from those four? Or do we need to go after other ways to help with mental and behavior implementation? We're making some strides, and we know we have some more work to do before the end of this year. 73, which is before 72, that's a mistake. Develop innovative, technology-based learning experiences for students to collect, connect, collect, collaborate, organize, share, and publish as part of a global community. Dave Fringer is working with a team that's coming up with those, and the expectations of where we'll use them. And it goes along with the previous one, 72. Implement a professional development model with a focus on using technology to support curriculum and instruction. And again, Dave and his team have been working with principals to say, "What kind of model can we use to be sure that we're giving you the help that you need, so that you have the help that you need to help students?" All of this goes for this purpose, to guarantee students graduate with the knowledge, skills, and character they need to be successful. May I answer any questions for you? We will keep working on them.
So, I have one question. I guess the hashtag CB Future Ready, when is that going to be trending? Like how?
Tonight.
Okay. I mean, is that announced, will you announce that, or is that already out there, I guess? Very good. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Excellent. We come to a resolution portion. We have approval of resolution directing the sale of 2016 Series Bonds. I do have a motion.
Move approval of resolution directing the sale of the 2016 Series Bonds.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion on this? I don't know if people have questions on it?
The sale of these bonds is replacing bonds that we currently have, but at a lower interest rate, saving the district money, correct?
Correct. But then, we're taking that savings and putting it into the stadium project.
I don't know if it's important or not, but there's two different motions, since there's two different resolutions that the attorney gave us. So, you might want to do them.
I move to approve directing the sale not to exceed $40 million School Infrastructure Sales Service and Use Tax Refunding Bonds, Series 2016. Are those two separate motions that we?
They're all separate.
Thank you. Second?
On that, do we, could we do that? Will we? Original, or?
We're okay.
Friendly, you know?
Yeah.
Okay, so, could we, I guess, do we need those separately voted on, I assume? With any discussion on that?
Since you explained the first one, do you want to explain this one too, Dean? Are they both the? It's the same thing. So, what we're going to do is, we're going to refinance the bonds. The first motion is to refinance the bonds that we currently have. The second one basically takes the savings we're going to realize from that, refinance and put it, and to have a, to have a, another bond out there that will allow us to use that money to put into the stadium project.
And so, authorize us to refinance existing bonds not to exceed $40 million. That's 2010A and 2011 Series Bonds.
Correct.
Okay, want to call the roll?
Dr. Ogres.
Yes.
Ms. Riley.
Yes.
Mr. LaFurla.
Yes.
Mr. Kazire.
Yes.
Mr. Hanson.
Yes.
Mr. Arthur.
Yes. And the motion's carried. Now, we have a second motion.
I move to approve directing the sale not to exceed $3,100,000 School Infrastructure Sales Service and Use Tax Refunding Bonds, Series 2016.
And a second?
Second.
Excellent. Any discussion on this? If not, Mr. Wilson?
Dr. Ogres.
Yes.
Ms. Riley.
Yes.
Mr. Hanson.
Yes.
Mr. Kazire.
Yes.
Mr. LaFurla.
Yes.
Mr. Arthur.
Yes. And the motion's carried. Next agenda is approval of resolution acknowledging David Van, is it Houghton or who?
Houghton.
David Van Houghton and Julie Foote for their work to establish a memorial for Gerald Dixon, former Gunn Elementary School employee. Is there a motion?
I move to approve the following resolution. As members of the Council Bluffs Community School District Board of Directors, we approve the efforts of David Van Houghton and Julie Foote to seek private donations and to seek appropriate city permission to place a memorial bench near the former Gunn School property to memorialize the life and work of Gunn custodian Gerald Dixon.
Is there a second?
Second.
Excellent. Any discussion or questions?
And our two guests are here today. Again, thank you for being here.
I think it's wonderful, your passion for this. Mr. Wilson, please call the roll.
Dr. Ogres.
Yes.
Mr. Hanson.
Yes.
Ms. Riley.
Yes.
Mr. Kazire.
Yes.
Mr. LaFurla.
Yes.
Mr. Arthur.
Yes. And the motion's carried. Excellent. Now, we come to the consent agenda. We have business items. We have two acknowledgements, for the exception of the gifts of treadmills from Woman Life and, and the other one is?
Michelle Somer.
Feelgood Factory?
Feelgood Factory.
Yeah, Feelgood Factory. Carter Lake Elementary. We have personnel action and claims and accounts. Is there a motion?
I move to approve our consent agenda.
Second.
A second, Mr. Wilson?